I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would convene as the Walworth County Board of Zoning Adjustment. Is there any old business? New business? Here none, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second, any more discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay, motion passed. I'd like to convene as the Walworth County Board of Zoning Adjustment. Is there any old business? New business? Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second, any more discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion passed. I'd like to convene as the Board of County Commissioners. Approval of agenda. I'll take a motion. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
A second.
Got a second, any more discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay, motion passed. Public forum. I just have a little letter here, I'm gonna read because it's getting a little out of control again. Public forum will be used in the way it should, which means you can address the board only regarding specific items on the agenda. When you sign up to speak, you must write on the agenda topic number you will be addressing. If it is not a topic on the agenda for this meeting, it will not be addressed. If you get off task and bring up anything aside from specific agenda items, you will be stopped and the meeting will move on. These are regular meetings for county business, not public hearings. Linda, I guess you're rolled down here, do you got anything that's on the agenda?
My response to that is on the bottom of the agenda page, it says, "The public forum in visitors section offers the opportunity for anyone not listed on the agenda to speak to the commissioners concerning important topics." Doesn't say anything that we have to talk about what's on the agenda.
I think I've discussed that months ago.
This is what it says on here.
That's what I, we went through this, I don't know how many times, Linda.
You're not gonna allow the public to come here and voice their concerns about anything other than what you have on the agenda today, on the agenda, for example, you have, let's see, where is it? Well, I'll go to the one at the bottom, the easiest one to find, 23. Discussion regarding Lake Inwood. How could I come here during public forum and speak on Lake Inwood when I have no idea what you're gonna be discussing? So I should come here and ask you, what's the discussion on Lake Inwood today, so I might have a question? I'm not allowed to do that, could you say, well, we're gonna discuss it when it's on the agenda, I'm not allowed to speak then?
That's what we agreed on once ago.
No.
Yes.
This is what's on your sheet here, if this isn't correct, then this needs to be changed.
Then it will get changed.
Okay, well then you can't expect me not to address the board today and make your changes today and say, okay, they're in effect today, you have to give us time to be able to adjust to your plans. You're shutting the people out completely if you're not letting us address anything.
Talk to your commissioners.
I am addressing you right here today.
Call each one individual.
And what could go back to me?
Only one way to find out if you're not doing it.
Well, I feel I have, I can discuss what I have on my, for topics today.
I will change that, and you've got five minutes.
Okay, thank you. First topic that I have several concerns about today is the annual budget for 2020 that was adopted by this commission board, and I would hope that the taxpayers of this county are paying attention. In order to balance the budget for the general fund, the commissioners applied an extra $1,069,927. This is the amount needed to supplement the revenue for the expenses they appropriated. The road and bridge fund needed a supplement of $502,775 to balance. That is a total of $1,572,702. So in order to get a balanced budget, the commissioners had to supplement cash from the reserves. At the September 24th meeting, the commission voted to approve this budget with a supplement of $1,572,702. There was no discussion at this meeting or previous meetings on making any cuts or reevaluating a 3% raise for the employees, or how to balance the budget with the revenue for 2020. Don't get me wrong, I'm not against employees getting a raise as long as there is revenue to support this expense. I feel this board has really let the county down, especially since they were aware that if they were going to continue to do this, the county was going to be in trouble. And they've shown very little concern as to where the money is going to come from to keep funding the budget in the future. In the last four years, the commissioners have supplemented the budget to the tune of That doesn't include the $1,572, except, $1,572,702 for the 2020 budget, which makes it a total of $6,413,179. It was stated that all counties have the same problem. It would have been comforting if this board had at least discussed the overspending or supplementing the budget by $1,572,702 for the 2020 budget. It didn't happen. Watch the YouTube video. If there ever was any discussion, it didn't happen at a commission meeting, as a taxpayer, I feel I need to come before this board and voice my concerns about this, even though after, it's after the fact. The budget for 2020 has been approved. You may ask then, why are you here today discussing this? It's because the public is not allowed to address the board during agenda items at a meeting, and the board is reluctant to answer any questions during the public forum, so it has to be done after the fact at the next meeting, hoping to get some answers. I strongly feel this board is doing a disservice of taxpayers of the county by not allowing a public participation during agenda items when there is very little discussion or no discussion at all at commission meetings on matters that affect county business. If it's not getting discussed at meetings, when and where are all these agenda items being discussed? County government is supposed to be open and transparent. The approval of the annual budget was done at the September 24th meeting. According to codified law 7-21-12, the commissioners shall, before October 1st, pass and adopt a resolution approving and adopting the provisional budget as the annual budget. There was no resolution read or passed at that meeting, this would be a violation of 7-21-12. According to codified law 7-21-10, amendments and corrections of provisional budgets by the commissioners. The minutes from the September 24th meeting have code numbers only for changes, from the provisional budget to the annual budget, which doesn't meet the requirement that it shall be entered at length in the minutes. Doesn't say anything about what the changes were, this would be a violation of 7-21-10. And the minutes from that meeting are not available on the county website either. The next topic I'd like to address is a request form that is now required to get information from the auditor's office. Says the auditor will process the request within five days. I did fill out a reform on the 9th and received a call that it was ready on the 15th. When I went in to get it, which meant two trips to Selby to get this information, I did ask if I could get some additional information, and was informed that the form had to be filled out, and that only the auditor can get the information, and that the two deputies in the office are not allowed to give out any information. According to codified law 7-7-22, powers of deputies. Since our auditor has a second full-time job outside the courthouse, it's my opinion, according to codified law 7-7-22, the deputy should be able to provide the public information being requested. According to the auditor's office, this request form has only been filled out by one person since it was implemented. Evidently, no documents have left the auditor's office for the past three weeks. If a person is requesting a large quantity of information, this request form would be reasonable, but not for a few pages. So what happens when the auditor is gone for more than five days? We just have to wait to get the information?
Your five minutes is up now.
Okay. Do any of you care to address any of my concerns that I have today?
I'm not speaking for all the commissioners, I'm speaking for myself. We agreed on the budget, and we're gonna move forward.
Okay, you have no concerns about the money that you spent for the town?
Very much.
And when was the discussion held on that? When did you discuss it?
What, do you think none of us know what's going on?
I asked, when did you discuss it?
Oh, if I could tell you today, I wouldn't be able to.
Was that a discussion that-
We don't think we ever discussed the budget, where the money in that.
Was that a discussion, that a board meeting?
I'm 100% positive that it was. We've been talking about it for years.
You discussed where the money was going to come from to put into the budget that would cover all the expenses you were talking about?
I told you more than likely, if half be, we'll have to pull it out of the reserve, if that's what it's gotta take, it's not wanting to.
Well, why was there never any discussion on having any cuts? Having the departments go back and look at theirs to see if there was somewhere they could cut theirs?
I think we have made cuts.
I'm asking if there was any discussion at the meetings, I was at all the meetings for the budget.
I think we discussed it at budget meetings.
You discussed what?
How would the department talk to them about it?
There were some-
I remember that.
There were some cuts to some of the departments as far as employees, yes. But then when it came time, you knew that you were going to need a million dollars to supplement the budget.
Yeah, I went to a meeting in fear to the budget, they said there's only 2% of that budget that you can control, the rest is all department, okay? Okay, so you really have 2% is what she told us. You really control, and then follow the employees.
So if we continued to this, the last five years, we spent over $6 million that was not covered by taxes, where's the money gonna continue to come from?
A lot of counties down there did too.
I'm not worried about the other counties, I'm worried about Walworth County. So where are you gonna find the money next year for 2021 budget?
That's what we'll have to figure out.
So from now on, at commission meetings, the taxpayers are only allowed to address agenda items?
That's what we had agreed on months ago.
That's what you stated, but on the bottom of the agenda, that's not what it says. And we've been able to discuss things that work on the agenda. How can I discuss something on the agenda if I don't know what you're gonna be discussing? How am I supposed to know what you're gonna discuss on Lake Inwood today? How can I do something during public forum?
Call the commissioner.
So I have to go down the list and call every commissioner until I find someone that knows what's going on with Lake Inwood? Or do all of you know that?
I doubt if anybody sitting in here knows anything about Lake Inwood.
So why is it on the agenda today if nobody knows anything about it?
Me. If you would have anything to do with things like that, you'd understand what's going on out there besides just sitting in this room.
This is the room where the decisions are supposed to be made in the county, that's why I'm sitting in this room.
Lake Inwood is just a discussion, that's all it is.
Right, it's on the agenda, you said if I had a question or something on the agenda, I need to do it during public forum. And I'm asking how I can do that when I know what the discussion is?
Your business is up.
Well, I hope the taxpayers in Walworth County wake up, because this is uncalled for not letting the public address the board.
Is there anybody else? You got something, Wood?
Do I have something?
Yes.
If I did, you wouldn't want to hear it, it's better not.
Spoken meeting. Rule 14, consider motion to approve county commission minutes of October 8th, 2019. Everybody had a chance to go over them? Still want to take a motion? Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second. Any more discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion passed. Claims, y'all had a chance to go over the claims? Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second, any more discussion on that? Here none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay, motion passed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Should I have a copy of my monthly statement? Questions, I don't know, I just changed.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second, any more discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay, motion passed.
And then I have a list of surplus items. We replaced our D and B computers. We got new software coming next year. So I was gonna have these destroyed, these were actually, all of us at the state had given us years ago.
You do each individual, Jamie, or just going along?
If we're gonna do the same thing to everything, I would just say move to surplus, because the keyboards are part of the computers anyhow. And then surplus, all three is a three, and destroy.
The computers and four keyboards, one monitor.
Okay, I'll take a motion over that. To destroy. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second. Any more discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay, motion passed. Thank you. Any questions?
U.S. Marshals has started their $97.
Anybody got any questions for Goshen?
Mr. Traveler, if we can move on to number 19, it's also under jail, 50 cent increase for probation increase for Mr. James Merron.
See, I need a motion for James Merron, 50 cent. Completion of probation. I need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I second it.
Got a second, any more discussion on that? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion passed. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Hello there.
Good morning.
Dan, Trista, Jared, we're from the Walworth County Care Center. Just wanna, I guess, I'm president, so I guess I get to speak, but anyway, I, we're just here for a little bit informational for the county and for the general area, to tell you our status about where we're at and what we need to do. We'd like to thank everybody from the whole county, I can't thank every community enough for helping us get us started, not only the county, Campbell County, the whole state, the whole United States, we've got donations from, I can't even say how many states that we've got donations from. That being said, we knew when we took this, this job on that it wasn't gonna be easy, nursing homes are closing all over the state. Our nursing home is unique, it stands by itself, we don't get help from Good Sam. Every penny that we take in at the Walworth County Care Center stays at the Walworth County Care Center. We prob, we employ about 70 people in this county, okay? That have jobs, benefits, whatever. All the staff, or not the staff, you know, the board is free will. We've had so many people help us around town, I can't begin to name them all, that give us donations and stuff. Our goal to start was to try to break even, to try to keep us running. The first year's been, been very well, we are breaking even. We always do fundraising though, because any money that we can raise goes for capital outlay. We've had, we were lucky, we got the building for free, but we got an old building for free. When an air conditioner goes out, it's 20,000, when a, when a water heater goes out, it's 15, 20,000, when a washing machine or, or, you know, whatever goes out, it's 15, 20, 30,000. That's not counting electrical and plumbing, which we may have to get after in the next few years. That being said, I, I, we, we've never gotten nothing from the county, and I'm not saying we really need it from the county, someday we might need it from the county, but if the county could give us anything at all, I know the city of Selby gave us free water last year, this year they might cut that back a little bit. And that, that free water at Good Sam is, is, is a pretty big bill, because we use, we have 50 residents and a lot of staff, you use a lot of, a lot of plumbing and a lot of things like that. So, I'm, I'm just saying that if the, you can find any amount of money to the Walworth County Care Center that stays and serves a service to the county, the whole county, because we're the only care center in Walworth County. And we don't get, you know, I, I know the Moberich Hospital is a, what do you wanna call, nonprofit hospital, but hospitals are way another level of nonprofit than Walworth County Care Centers. We have to pay a lot of the taxes that they don't have to pay, we don't get, we don't get the Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement that the hospital gets, and Trista, if I'm speaking out of turn or not right, you know, they get a way more reimbursement than, than our nursing home does. And we, we take in everybody, take in the rich, the poor, the whatever, and try to make them serve in our county. So, I guess, I just want you to consider somewhere along the line that if you could find some money for us, it will go into the capital outlay, it does stay in the state, in, in our county. We don't send any money anywhere else, it's all right here, it's all for, for 70 employees in the county. I just wanna thank you for your time, I wanna thank you for, I wanna thank the whole county, who's ever watching this on YouTube and who has ever contributed in any way, whether it be a volunteer, shoveling snow, helping us with something else, we, we just wanna make sure that everybody's saying it. And I wanna thank you for your time. Trista, you got anything else, or Jared, he works for our management company? If I forgot anything, I kinda was just here to thank you and just tell you that we could, yeah.
We're not taxing you for anything, are we? As far as-
You don't, we don't pay property tax, do we? But we, we have to pay taxes on the stuff we buy.
Correct.
And that, I thought we were, you know, like, like the supplies and our computers.
You can't be tax exempt on that.
We have a tax exempt status, but nursing homes are not taxed in, in South Dakota.
We pay all sale, uh, state sales taxes.
We have to pay all the state sales taxes and everything, so most of the supplies we buy, all, all the supplies, we have to pay taxes on.
Hospitals are exempt.
What's that?
Hospitals are exempt, but-
Yeah, hospitals are exempt from that, and we thought we were too when we started, but when you buy a hundred thousand and then you have another tax on there, that surprised us a little bit. But, that's just the way the laws are, except for nursing-
We're not charging any property tax as far as the county really-
I don't think we're property taxed on us, I don't think we do that. I don't think the counties, I, I don't think property tax, we are not. I, I don't, I guess I can't 100%, but I know the sales taxes, we're not exempt from that, and no nursing home is in South Dakota.
I was thinking, as far as what we would have direct control over-
Yeah, and you really don't have any control, I don't think the county has any control over the tax that-
We don't have control over anything.
I don't think we're that, we're paying property tax.
We don't have control over anything.
Right. One thing we do, are though, we're a 501(c)(3), so anyone who donates money to us can write it off as a tax exempt on their taxes. So we do have that status, but we still have to pay for the supplies and the food and all that stuff, we have to pay sales taxes.
Are you, did you get rid of all the travelers now?
We're 100% staffed with local people. We have zero travelers for, how long now?
January, I would say.
Since January, maybe? So they're all local workers, we do have a couple of workers from North Dakota that actually rented an apartment in, in South, for the winter months, so they don't get snowed in, which is pretty awesome. Pretty awesome. Our staff has been really awesome, they worked overtime, they try not to have travelers, so I gotta commend them also.
Sounds good.
So, I, I'm not a good salesman person for paying for money, but if you can find any, anything, would be welcome.
Thank you guys for everything you do.
All right. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
I'm in the process of closing out that, uh, Sycro Road box culvert. I put together a report of, uh, the status of payments that are due yet. Two-thirds of the way down the page, uh, four unpaid invoices, Clark Engineering, there's one coming yet, so that number, that number, do you have twenty-two sixty-five? That number, current status is twenty-five fifty-six sixty-five with another en, invoice coming. Twenty-five fifty-six sixty-five. With one more invoice coming. What I, I'm open for discussion, my, my status is, uh, we haven't approved construction change order number one, I think was approved.
Which ones did we take the last meeting? We had, uh, kind of see what, if there was nothing at the end, it was that change order number one or two.
I don't remember Kevin. I've been around the world in the last two weeks. And I'm not even sure if we've done one, but I'll check into that. But, uh, they're itemized here if you need, if you have questions. I don't have the originals. I have copies. Change order number one is, uh, the rock foundation. That's the inch and a quarter clean rock that was placed under the structure with, uh, with, uh, gridiron backing. Uh, that was, uh, additional expenses for the under, because of the contractor went through. And, uh, change order number two is, uh, the drainage fabric that was placed with that inlet construction. If you remember that there was, uh, a fiber optic telephone line that was unrecognized when they were there the first time. And, uh, that held the project up until, uh, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, that consists of, uh, additional drainage fabric needed, a cost of five hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, the inlet work with the, and the mobilization of the excavator to come back out and dig the, uh, dig the inlet part of that thing out, that was five hundred bucks. Uh, excavate the rip route that was in place for replacing, three hundred and ninety dollars. Inlet work over excavate for additional rip route, uh, that we buried on the inlet side. Five hundred bucks, uh, placement of the county furnished rock. Uh, we provided, uh, they're saying forty-six ton, but it was fifty cubic yards. Uh, that was three hundred and twenty-two dollars. And the erosion co, control blanket that, uh, prevents the scourge from occurring on the inlet side was seven hundred and seventy dollars. And that total cost was three thousand and forty-two as reported on the summary sheet. So, uh, the only option I would be looking at would be county commission approval to, uh, I don't think you've approved the construction change order number one, or number two. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve change orders one, two, and all the other change orders dealing with the Sycro Road project, so we can close it out.
There are only two.
Consider motion to approve change orders for Sycro Road project.
Okay, Jamie said yep. You got a motion on the floor. Need a second?
I'll second it.
Got a second. Any, any more discussion on that?
So, the only other one we're not gonna have is that other one coming from Clark.
And that will be available for the next meeting in November.
Okay.
Or we can close that out.
Uh, I would say not close it off until we get it in, so we can see exactly what it is. We don't have, we don't have the power.
Yeah, you're, you're waiting for one more invoice from Clark. And, uh, this report is to summarize the expenses and what's anticipated, and, uh, I don't have an invoice for the last visit when they did the, uh, monitored the construction change order number two work. When that comes in, it'll all be provided, be provided at the meeting, and you can approve that, close it out.
Motion to start any other discussion? Here none. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say nay. Motion passed.
And that second item, that simply we just discussed that, it was, uh, closed out the Sable, Sable Box Culvert by the first meeting in November. Uh, we're on status to do that. Uh, consider motion to sell used culverts as surplus property. When I was here in the past, and I'm pretty sure there's some minutes on the records from back then, that, uh, the county commission authorized, uh, the sale of culverts randomly. And I believe the motion was to the effect that, uh, at half price of new. Uh, do you have any objections to the commission authorizing a process like that? It's came up, uh, once or twice already this year that, uh, county forces are taking old culvert out. It's laying there, somebody comes up and says, can I buy that? And technically, we can't.
Because you'd have to surplus that thing.
Yes, and, uh, if, if you don't take, if you, if you don't consider the option of allowing us to have it surplus on the records as a, a surplus piece of, uh, item, uh, then that means we haul it back and we stockpile it and, uh, inevitably end up in a, uh, an auction, a surplus auction. And, uh, that's more work for us to do. If somebody wants it right on site, I'd like the authority to sell it right on site.
Okay, I take a motion for that?
I have a motion.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor and a second. Any other discussion? Here none. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say nay. Motion passed.
I should've commented during the discussion part, I'm sorry, but, uh, do I set the value on what I think it is? Or do you want something in the motion that says half price of, you should be able?
I don't know. You should do it. You're the one that knows what they cost.
The Solun Bridge structure is, uh, is out. All that left is salvageable material where scrap iron and bridge planks. Uh, I'd like, uh, a motion to list, uh, the bridge and the bridge planks that are located in the Jim Hoak gravel pit. Uh, open it up for surplus and let somebody come in and cut it up and, and that'll be a sealed bid type process. Uh, pending your action today, I'll immediately get it to the paper next week. And in two weeks, the sealed bids come in for the salvage of the bridge. Scrap iron, bridge planks, I'm not gonna itemize them. It's gonna be a lump, some, a lump together thing.
All lump together?
Yep.
Okay, I'd need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor. Need a second? Got a second. Any more discussion? Here none. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say nay. Motion passed.
And the next item is relative to your action, uh, sealed bids will be accepted the first meeting in November. I hope there's truly timeframe, that if there's a true timeframe, I'll have to set that back, but, uh, that's for your information.
Should be.
Okay, it'll be in the paper next week.
Actually, we don't meet until the fifth.
I think there's time for that then. Next item is just simply, uh, the DOT is finalizing plans for the Highway forty-seven project.
Do we need a motion on that for sealed bids?
Motion to advertise.
Yeah. Okay, consider motion to advertise for bids to be opened the first meeting in November. I need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
You got a motion on the floor. Need a second? Got a second. Any more discussion? Here none. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say nay. Motion passed.
Gary, are you gonna have a move at the meeting or?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, report the DOT is finalizing plans for the Highway forty-seven project. It appears that it's a total reconstruction of Highway forty-seven, uh, with bridge removal. Uh, that's simply for your information. So, it was presented to me and I'm presenting it to you. Uh, the exact accession thing, I, I don't need it, uh, so I would forego that.
Okay.
And the DOT, I believe it's, uh, I can't remember what the office was. Data inventory and planning, uh, has been in the office, and they've made comments that the county hasn't considered, hasn't done any changes to the county highway system for a long time. And they were questioning, uh, that's kinda rare that, uh, counties don't modify their systems. So, uh, this is something coming down, uh, through the channels. Uh, there are some roads that are currently township roads that, uh, we've spent a lot of money. I'm gonna say, for example, uh, the road into the New Everett's development, uh, that's a township road. Uh, I would consider, uh, changing that to a primary county highway system road. Uh, and I, it, it's, it's gonna be a public type forum thing. That before we make changes, the public is gonna be informed that, uh, this change is being considered. And, uh, it'll be some kind of a process where the public will have input on any changes to the system revision, so. Any questions on that?
Well, I could crew me out.
Were you gonna look at the old map and then compare it to what we think is going to be the new map? Is that, how do you wanna do it, Gary, or? Because I know there's a lot of spots that different people think it belongs to different entities, so. Um, I would agree that Gary's right, that we need to update, and I don't know who would be the best to update as far as. And then we should probably send it out to the municipalities, because there's going to be, is a lot, I know there's a lot around the city of Mowbridge that this block used to be county, now it's city. And so, maybe send it out to the cities also to say, we're making this adjustment to our county highway map. Do you agree with it? To make sure that they're in agreement as far as what it belongs to, or what entity it belongs to.
Yes.
Is that a, is this a time where we could try to get some of that stuff in Mowbridge straightened around? Where some of those streets like, uh, is it Mean that comes all the way out? And Twelfth or whatever that comes out there to where we could, that could be Mowbridge responsibility and... Because there's some of that stuff that's actually in city limits that we are controlling. Or is that not even an option?
Technically, I think the comment would be wrong. Uh, with, the, the stuff that we're doing in Mowbridge is outside city limits, but within their planning and zoning jurisdiction.
Is that, is that like where Highway twenty goes around, or Twentieth Street comes around there where we come down almost to Twelfth? Uh, that's not in the city limits, sir?
I believe not.
Oh, really? Okay. I, I, I thought that was all city limits, all the way out to Twentieth.
It, the, the intent, and I want the public to know that the intent of this is not targeted to get rid, get out of the city stuff that we're doing.
Yes, Jamie.
I, I agree with Gary. It's just to clarify who is responsible for what, I think, because there's a lot of confusion as far, I know there was one street, um, and I can't remember what it is, and I think it's inside city limits where we were responsible for like two blocks or something like that. And cities was thinking that they had responsibilities, so we were fine with them making sure. But I think it's good to regenerate a map and present it as far as what we think is our responsibility. Give it to the other municipalities to make sure that they're in agreement and aren't disputing anything. Because I think the main thing Gary's after here, and Gary's after is, is clarification of what our highway system is.
And I, I think you're going beyond what the DOT is asking for. I'll cite an example, and, and, uh, for me to, to make comments that, that the New Everett's road, which is currently secondary or a township road, uh, should probably be county highway system road. On the reverse, are you guys aware of, uh, uh, the schoolhouse south of McCaskin? Uh, where that's at? Uh, all the way from the LeBeau Park across eighty-three, and I believe it's two or three miles east, that is a primary county highway system road. But it's signed as fair weather seasonal. That's, that's kind of my, my correction on this thing is that why is the county highway system road signed as fair weather seasonal? On the reverse effect, if New Everett's comes in, that comes out. It goes back to being classified as a secondary or a township road. The public, like I said, has input on this whole planning process. Uh, like I said, I believe there should, there would be public hearings and things like that. Uh, yeah.
Well, then, if there's a fair weather road, isn't there some guidelines as to what's gotta be on that road or not on that road?
Guidelines with regard to what?
Rebel.
Uh, no. Uh...
I'm just asking.
Yeah, those roads, uh, as far as the administrative side goes, uh, they're not providing, aren't they, any traffic? And, uh, whether it's a, a fair comment or not, but if there's no traffic, then the maintenance level drops. And when the maintenance level drops, then here comes the, uh, and, and that's not a strategically designed system either that, uh, uh, you can question, how can a county highway system road be signed as fair weather minimum, fair weather seasonal or minimum maintenance? Uh, that's the purpose of this thing, that, uh, that, uh, our county highway system road should be the ones that are in the best shape, that are minor collectors, major collectors, and things like that. If there's virtually limited traffic on them, I, in my opinion, they shouldn't be on the county highway system, they should be secondary road. It, it wouldn't change the level of maintenance. None of, uh, none of the stuff that would come out of this, uh, revision of the system would change any levels of maintenance. And I would have to be careful that, uh, if we're taking seventy miles of county highway system roads that are currently posted at that, and only transferring the county highway system to a five mile transition from township to county, to a five mile transition from township to county, I would have to, I would be concerned that we might lose some, some funding by not making them equal. Yeah, we'll give up, we'll give up five miles of county highway system road to township. And in the reverse, five miles of township will come into the county highway system to maintain our, our inventory of county highway system roads.
Would it be possible during this to designate some haul routes for some of the roads?
Haul routes with regard to what are you hauling?
Green.
Back in the day, there used to be, the DOT recognized farm-to-market routes. I keep saying the first time over, but that kind of fell by the wayside. And I don't believe that there's any, any, any funding sources by virtue of grants or, or things like that because it is farm-to-market. I think the state is recognizing that the locals control their systems better than the state does. And remember the days, Mean, used to be farm-to-market roads? They kind of, they kind of went by the wayside. It, it didn't change the level of maintenance. It's just that hypothetical farm-to-market thing really didn't mean that much anymore, so.
No, but I'm just saying, if we had designated haul routes, farm-to-market, whatever you wanna call it, then we could possibly put some ex, a little extra maintenance on those to maintain them a little bit. Because these roads have never been upgraded to the, to haul the weights that we're hauling out, out there now. And even if we would put down some like stable or something on those roads to maintain it a little bit and firm them up a little.
We did target activity by the Zabel Brothers place, Mark Sticklemers. We did target activity to make improvements to that. The low spots where the water was, additional pit run or additional gravel with, with two birds being killed with one stone, that we're raising the road level with the possibility of the water rising if we get another bad winter. And that was, that was by virtue of an internal type situation. And if we can make improvements to that and know that we're satisfied with the trucks that are hauling on it, it's recognized in-house that we're doing this to support the trucks using the gravel road instead of the asphalt road. I would be, I would be crazy to sit here and say that the county's infrastructure's in good shape. I've, I've never seen it worse. So we got a long ways to go. I agree. Any other questions, comments? Later said that's a process that's gonna become is probably over the winter. Is there a value, this is not on the agenda, is there a value of stuff I can buy without commission approval?
What do you mean though, I guess?
Because it's kind of relative to, I kind of wanna purchase a quarrying machine, the value of like two thousand dollars. And over the winter, if it's an open winter, we're gonna be going out and analyzing our entire asphalt road system. This quarrying machine sets on the ground and it cuts through the asphalt. And internally, there'll be documentation that there's eight inches of gravel and two inches of asphalt concrete. Something that's, something that's needed to, to analyze where we spend the money and what we can do for road improvements. It could be done by contractors, but for a two thousand dollar investment, in an open winter with any available staff, the process would be, I'm gonna say the Sitka Road from Highway twelve south to where it ends at the Web Water Plant Road. I kind of been throwing some numbers around in my head that, that starting at Highway twelve, they drive two thousand feet and on quarter line, they do a, a soil, core boarding. We collect the sample, we document the depth of the asphalt, the depth of material, and go the next one, another two thousand feet down the road, and that sample would be extracted from center line. And you catch the drift, but quarter line, right side, center line, quarter line, left side, and come up with some data that tells us what kind of house, what kind of granular base is there. And it would give me satisfaction in knowing that if the engineers take a look at this data and say that a leveling mat of an inch and a half or two inches over the top will give you structural stability. No asphalt mats until I have satisfaction of knowing that, that the stability, the sub-bass stability is there, so.
Will you send any samples in or you'll just do it all yourself?
We could, we could send in every third sample or something for a gradation analysis, things like that. But when I left, I can't remember, we added three inches of gravel to Highway twelve on the Sitka Road going south. I can't remember where we ended, but we did dump gravel on top and did the cold side mill in place. And when I see the, the wheel rutting and the fatigue stuff that's, that's being witnessed, it's like, jeez, we probably should have put six inches on and went through the process. It was ongoing when I left and I was gone for eleven or twelve years. And I'm not seeing much improvement by the activity that we did for it. We only got eleven or twelve years of life out of it. And that's uncalled for. But.
I would have, probably, you getting a boring machine, like two thousand.
It's, it's something that, that's why I questioned, is do I need permission if there was a limit of five hundred dollars or something like that, but sixty-five hundred?
As long as you have it in your budget and it's not above the bid requirement amount, which is much higher than the two thousand, it's pretty much at your discretion to purchase what you need. And again, it's realistically, you're, not realistically, but it's your discretion on, you know, what you wanna notify the, if you feel like it's appropriate to notify then that I'm going to go buy this piece of equipment for two thousand or I'm gonna buy this piece of equipment, that's kind of your discretion.
I was kind of shocked on that Twelfth Street when, when it went really bad and we put the gravel over the top. I, I know that we established a spread rate of like three inches compacted. So when the mill comes in, I know based on our spread rate that we put three inches on and there was three-quarter inch of accumulated asphalt surface treatments. When you chip seal, you get about three-eighths of an inch. And so three inches plus three-quarter, let's say four. I felt real comfortable that they could, could mill seven inches of depth before they encountered the sub-bass dirt. The mill came in, sat down, and they've got gauges. He went to seven inches and he was hitting dirt rig. So the indicators were that the existing prior to our three inches of add-on, there was three-quarter inches of accumulated water surface with about two inches of gravel underneath. And Twelfth Street is in the profile that's pretty bad on Twelfth Street. So that's one of them cases where they'll probably get killed for saying this, but special interest groups come in and say, I want an asphalt road. And to keep the expenditures down to provide it, let's just blade up the gravel that's there and put it all over the top and call it an asphalt road. I'm surprised it lasted as long as it has. Last item is not on the agenda, but it's somewhat of an emergency type thing. I've been going around to thirty-one culvert sites related to, to the FEMA damage to determine whether the, whether the culvert was damaged by the rainfall events. And while I went across the timber bridge structure by Dolores Menke, I don't know if she still lives there or not, but there was some fatigue of the gravel surface in the corner. And when I inspected it, the abutment walls are starting to come into the crack. I called an engineer up this morning, or yesterday, and asked him if he could stop down and give me an opinion on whether the structure is stable enough to maintain traffic through it. We had a visit this morning, based on the visit, I can't get my notes here. Based on my visit this morning, that the representative was from K L J Engineering. He would, he felt it was in our best interest to have K L J, if you wanna use K L J, send an engineering firm down and do a structure assessment. To avoid the time, timeframe, I'm reporting to you that I think we're gonna be closing that segment of roadway to light vehicle traffic only until the assessment survey is done. Nobody wants to see anybody fall into a structure by putting light vehicle traffic on it only. If somebody crosses it with a truck, it's loaded, or a combine, or so forth, we warned you and I did make contact with the landowners out there personally and told them that I'm worried about the bridge. And they are all on track with the fact that they might have to take their trucks around, so. So.
Is that on the Dorothy Menke road?
Yes.
Yep.
That, that road is bad.
I was worried about it twelve years ago.
Yeah.
And when I did do an inspection, it's currently holding about four inches of water underneath it. The creek is flowing. But the comments this morning was that we have to cover our liabilities by posting it to light vehicle traffic. We don't wanna see anybody get hurt, so.
So if she is died, then of course, that's gonna change your farming operations.
Yep. So Jamie, what do you feel about K L J?
Basically, this is kind of again, this would be a new business item, since we didn't have it on the agenda, but classified as that. But that's again, that's the discretionary of the, of the highway superintendent. Basically, that's all his code.
I don't know, do we need a motion? I, I think I can close.
Put it on the agenda, go next step. It's not on the agenda, so we can't act on it.
I think you could probably go, it's not gonna be over fifty thousand dollars or anything like that, is it?
For the, you know, the structure assessment survey?
I think that's all within your discretion as highway superintendent, that it doesn't even really need any commission. Unless it goes over the big, big amount.
And the process is gonna be that this, the structure assessment survey, if it comes back saying that it's not suitable for even light vehicle traffic, that would be a project, then the road would be formally closed only in that mile segment and with no traffic at all. And it would be a construction project first part of two thousand twenty. And the engineering firm would do hydrology study and size the, what we put in, whether it's metal culverts or whether it's another box culvert. But that needs to get addressed real quick, like, so.
Are you just putting load limit like six thousand pounds over there?
I haven't really, this came about yesterday afternoon when I went across it. And I haven't had really enough time that, I, I, I gotta do some research with what signs are available. I don't know if they make a light vehicle traffic only sign. There's gonna be some signing issues, but in the interim, the road's gonna be barricaded. And with one of the panels left open to allow for local access until I can get the, the signing ordered and put in place, so.
The gentleman asked me the other day, what's it mean on the, on the sign that says legal load?
I debated that with the engineering firm and with the DOT that gets the bridge inspection reports. It seemed kind of ridiculous that, that based on engineering study of a bridge structure, that the existing legend is X amount of tons single axle, X amount of tons combination, and X amount of tons like double. And all of a sudden, the engineering study comes in and says, change the combinator, change the single to like three tons lower, and on the combination, put legal. And it's like, there, there's some configurations out there with ten or fifteen tag axles where they could, I'm pretty sure this structure had a thirty-eight ton limit. And I know there's some combinations out there with, with kicker axles and stuff like that where they can get well over thirty-eight dollars, and I told them, it's ridiculous. But that's what the standard is, it doesn't make any sense to me either, so. Question?
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Oh. Did you not put that loading thing on the agenda?
Well, that's what we discussed.
Oh, that was the executive session?
Yeah, tab about it before.
Okay. So, do we wanna do that? I had a request by the executive with the weather conditions the way they are, if they could load their trucks on roads. And that would be, I'm assuming it would be a grain cart that comes out of the field and loads the truck on the road because of the wet climate? Do we want to, is that an executive accession deal or?
I don't think so, I think we can do it in public forum.
So this, this conversation is relative to that executive?
I would do it in new business, and then we can address it there. Since rather than an executive session, we're gonna discuss it, so.
Just wait till we get new business again?
How long will it be?
We'll just go to it right now. Just gotta make it your way.
So the request was made that how I felt about farm access or farm, farm climates using county roads to fill semi trucks, and I'm going on assumption it's grain carts. I felt it was the conditions and the enforcement people's concern. It's a, it's a discussion, is nearly what it is, so what do you guys think? It's a, it's a discussion, is nearly what it is, so what do you guys think?
I did have a chance to talk to the motor carrier. Basically, a lot of our roads, or I shouldn't say roads, our fields either empty onto state highway, which we have no control over, or empty onto a county road. And we already have our load limits set on that. In speaking with the motor carrier division, a lot of that heavy equipment combines, grain carts, their maximum weight that's allowable on most of the roads is their unloaded weight. The, the weight of the vehicle itself is pretty much towards the max. So as soon as you start to put grain in one of those pieces of equipment, like a combine or a grain cart, they're going to automatically be over their allowable weight on state highways. The question is, what do we want to do on our county roads? And also whether we want to allow them to load right on the county road itself? And whether that's a safety issue or not?
Yes, Mary.
I, I have no doubt my mind is probably a safety issue. But I think the farmers are in a situation right now where they can't get out of the field. And they got crops sitting there. I think we're going to have to try to do something to try to help them out. I understand that our roads aren't in good shape and everything else the way they are. But I don't know what they're going to do. They can't, they can't get the crop out. I feel like we need to, we need to try to accommodate that if we can.
Just Jamie.
I know like, and when Gary and I were discussing this, it was also like, well, what are we going to do on the section lines that are between properties that nobody really uses? And honestly, on that, it's, on every section line in the state of South Dakota, it's a highway, whether, until it's been vacated by a governmental entity. So there's a lot of places out there that we never would use or never have used that are still technically a road. And I don't think that's an issue there. I think the main issue is, is what, on a lot of our heavily gravelled or heavily paved or chip sealed roads that are traveled quite a bit by the public, are we going to allow on? Because realistically, on a lot of that other stuff, it's not going to really affect us because we don't really do a lot of maintenance on those. But the ones that we do maintenance on and that there's a lot of public traffic is, is more of, I think, the concern here.
I would, I mean, we farm too, and it sucks this year. I don't, I don't think there would be a problem at all if they did it on gravel roads and tried to stay off the paved roads. Because the weight limits, there's no weight limits on a gravel road.
Technically, there is.
But, I mean, I, I don't have a problem doing it on gravel road.
I guess I look at it the same way. I don't, I don't think we should be trying to do it on asphalt roads. I think it should be at the discretion of either you or if it's starting to break that road up, gravel road, I think a guy needs to abandon the idea. I guess that's how I look at it.
I think the farmers are going to have to use a little discretion because some of these grain carts are up to thirteen hundred bushels. And if they pull that loaded on a gravel road, it's going to squash it out.
There's grain carts at two thousand bushels.
Pardon?
There's grain carts at two thousand bushels.
Either way, you're, you're overloaded.
I hope any farmer uses discretion now, even if it says two thousand bushels on it. I would hope that they got a little more common sense than that, that they're not going to put two thousand bushels on it and try to go out onto the road. I mean, they're going to have to use a little bit of common sense themselves. We don't want to take ten million into our roads.
I think, I think a lot of the fields are so soft that I don't even think that's an issue. Because I don't think they can, they can't even get their trucks out or their grain carts out of the field if you got that much on them. They're just, they're, they're so heavy and so soft right now. But I, I, I agree. We, you know, we can't destroy our paved roads, we can't destroy our gravel roads. But hopefully they, I feel like we need to try to help them out, try to get the stuff out. But avoiding paved roads, I have no problems with that at all.
Basically, your comments are being directed at these two people right here. If, if I see road damages and stuff, I'm concerned with it. But these are the guys that are going to be getting the calls from the public that says I can't get around this vehicle because it's using the road. And it's, it's the law enforcement side and the, and the attorney side that would be dealing with this. What I, what I hope would never happen is that once authorization is, is given to load on the road, that they don't start driving down the road to a better location to load. You know, it's, I'm, I'm all about working with them, but, because it's a difficult year for everybody.
I guess that's how I look at it. I, I think that the county has to work with them. And I, and I feel that if it, if it gets abused, then, then it should quit. Just period. Just Josh.
Going off what Jamie said, and I totally get the predicament that the farmers are in. I've talked very briefly about it. It is a safety thing, and common sense is going to have to play a lot into this on where they're, where and if they're going to do it. I don't want to see the roads get any more deteriorated either. Like I said, I wholeheartedly understand the predicament that the farmers are in. I do. But legally, on a standpoint, this commission would have to change some kind of tonnage or load limit on those roads for us to, I think legally do this. If you want to, I don't know what the magical number is. But I think that's what we need to look at. But this commission has authority over that, but not on a state road, obviously. On our county road system, yes. You guys could change a speed limit if you wanted to. But I just want the board to be careful with that. I do think we should decide on something if we're going to. And like you said, it, it's an emergent type of situation. It's now, it's not later. It's something that has been talked about and is requested right now. So I don't know how the board wants to take stance on that. But Jamie can add in on that. But it's, I think we need to look at that issue.
You mean like Josh, let's just say that they completely would have eighty thousand pounds in the truck? Is that what you're saying? Is then maybe you should drop that down to say fifty thousand pounds? Is that, is that kind of what you mean there?
Work with our superintendent.
I'm just asking.
It would be increasing because what the motor carrier was saying is, is that again, like grain carts, let's use grain carts and combines. Their max weight for on highways is them hauling unloaded. And so as soon as they get onto a state or county road with even a few bushels on, they're over the weight limit generally, whether for the posted county road or for the state highway. That's a problem. So realistically, we would have to increase our weight limits. The other issue is that this is a big safety issue because what if someone comes over the hill and doesn't see the grain cart coming and heads on a tractor? We are allowing it. That's my feeling.
Realistically, if you have a semi sitting on the road, you're going to have to then or be off the road to get a grain cart in there in the first place. Because the grain cart's wider, just as wide as the road itself.
And that's kind of what I'm thinking is, is that it's going to be a, a semi with a trailer and the grain cart's going to pull along to dump in, which is going to take up both lanes.
There isn't that many roads that you can fit both a grain cart and a semi on most of the roads that we have.
It will be tried, though.
I guess with your comment, Jamie, I would look at, when you said increase the weight, well then, by increasing it, then basically you're saying, let's increase the truck load?
Yeah. That's, that's the dilemma that we have here is, is that.
If they were going to bring, you know, bring, essentially bring that grain cart out on the road, empty is, is already the legal limit for that grain cart. You'd have to increase that. They're, they're going to still have to fall within the confines of that tonnage for that truck per axle. But increasing that for that grain cart to come out on the road and fail, that's what we're looking at. Because that's where, that's the only way you're going to be able to do it. You can't, the whole idea is getting that truck out of the field because of the, the moisture and stuff that's in there. And not get the stock, or spend a lot of time hooking onto them and pulling and breaking stuff. But is it, so essentially, the truck itself would stay the same. But to get that grain cart out there, that's what's going to need to change in order to, but.
Is it something that you could specify as a loading zone? That you could increase the amount?
You'd have to.
Because that's where the issue is, is what we're trying to do is being able to allow that grain cart out there to dump onto the semi. The semi cannot haul more than they can right now. I mean, we don't want them going down roads with more on overweight. The big deal is to be able to get the grain cart up to them legally to bring it out on the road so they're still legal because they're way overweight when they got the grain cart.
Correct. I don't know the answer to that. I mean, you can, you can put as much signage up as you want. I've seen it in construction zones. But the best thing is pick, you know, picking the best flat area that you can to have for that loading zone if that were, were the case. But. Gary, have you ever seen anything like that?
I've seen in a palace combines, that's back in the day when the heads weren't so wide. Load would come off the approach onto the road and move the truck right off the combine. But I think that statute applies to the combines too, that.
Yep.
If there's any commodity in a combine, it's likely overweight.
My understanding also.
Well, if you're coming out to put a load off the combine, our head is forty feet. That's going to take up the whole road right there. So where are you going to put the semi?
The people that asked me about this, I told them I put it on the, on the agenda for discussion. And that's what we did.
I suggest you just don't say use common sense.
I, I just hope.
I don't think that we can, I don't think there's any way that you can be able to set a load limit number. Some of the grain carts with tracks, their footprint is actually less on that fully loaded than a semi.
I guess it's all going to amount to is common sense. I mean, I surely hope, because a lot of these farmers have numerous trucks, I surely hope that they wouldn't have three, four trucks sitting on the highway, on the gravel road waiting to get loaded. I would hope that they got, because I mean, that's, that's where Josh would come in to where. Dangerous then, if you got all these semis just sitting out there to load, right? I don't know where you're going to have them, but I don't think they're even just sitting there on the side of the road.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know that. I mean, oh.
Discussion over?
Alrighty. Thanks, Gary.
I provided the landfill, the September report. I'll take a look at it and see if you have any questions. We still haven't collected from Hops, Connects, or First Choice. By Lylee, one has been collected. I, I left a message and I haven't gotten any response. I've left messages with the Connect one also. I, he had called one day, but I tried calling him back and he hasn't answered. River Ridge Apartments needed some certificates filled out, so they should be getting theirs paid soon. We got everything they needed.
Is standing rock, or more of the?
They're still paying twenty thousand. Um, I have requested it. But they just continue to send twenty. Last meeting you visited requested to go over the proposal for the construction management.
Yes, my name is Kyle from Wink. I'm helping with the traffic management and the construction oversight for this project. We had a lot of proposal coming in. It's pretty much, this proposal is detailing oversight for the construction for the slope failure and the stormwater improvements. We will also be writing a documentation report at the end of it to the state, detailing what we did and why it was necessary.
I guess what I'm not aware of is why, why is there always going to be somebody there once a, once a week for, throughout the project? I guess that's.
We were going to go, yeah, we were going to go full-time oversight. We decided that because of budget wise, we wanted to do limited construction oversight, and we brought our budget down based off of what Becky gave us. The way we're going to do this is if we have very good communication with the contractor, we should be able to do our field documents, get our required testing, all of that doing one or two days oversight a week. So we're just going to have to be very strategic on when we come out. So we're just gonna have to be very strategic on when we come out and make sure that when we do come out, we're doing compaction testing. We're getting all the pictures that we needed, um, and any comments or questions from the contractor at that time.
This would probably end up being a reimbursable expense because it's part of that disaster declaration. These projects are, so possibility.
I guess my question would be, if the contractor has all the requirements that they're supposed to do and all the specifications are in there. Why would we need somebody else to just say, yeah, we agree with what they're doing?
Couple things, um, so yes, we did prepare the plans and specs for it. But at the end of a project, you're gonna have to submit a documentation report to the state, construction documentation report to the state, detailing what you did and why you did it. And also for the testing that you're gonna need for the slope failure and the compaction of the clay liner that's going in above stage one, phase two, to limit the leachate generation, we're gonna need to do compaction testing. And we have looked at trying to get someone else to do the compaction testing, a third-party tester. And the closest that there was someone was Aberdeen, South Dakota. So that was fairly expensive. So what we did was we figured we would take our budget and try to be as efficient as possible. And when we do come out here and do the documentation, we'll also be doing testing. So that's really why we need to have construction oversight to some extent.
Okay, my next question would be. If there's a problem. Say something fails or whatever. Who, who is going to be the one responsible for this project? Are you guys going to do it or is the contractor gonna be doing it? Because we're in the same boat right now as there was a project. The engineer said do it one way. The contractor did it. Paid both of them.
Yeah.
And we're still in the middle of this fight. Who's responsible?
In terms of failure, what are you referring to?
If the slope failure, all of a sudden that whole thing slides down the hill again.
Yeah.
And then we already paid you, we paid contractor.
Right.
And what do we do?
Right, and in terms of the slope failure, we would take fault for that because we have ran geotechnical analysis on it and we've moved it from a two and a half one slope to a four to one. It's not gonna slide out after this in that area.
I'm just using that as a hypothetical deal because we're in the, right in the middle of this now.
Yeah, and that's.
Do we come after you as oversight? Or if they, or the contractor for doing it the way that you guys wanted it?
It would come down to, did we get proper testing in the field? If, if we got all of our compaction testing and they built it to our post grades, it would come back to us. But if, let's say we didn't wanna do oversight and we didn't do compaction testing and we just used our plans and specs to do it and we didn't do oversight, we would not take any liability on that. If that makes sense.
That's my biggest deal is who's responsible for this project.
Right, and that would come down to if we do go forward with our construction oversight so that we can prove and say that we documented the construction and we were confident that we're not gonna have any failures. And that we got all of our testing. And we know it's the grade. We saw the ad built after, we got the survey back from the contractor and we know it's designed exactly how we meant it to be.
Anybody else have questions for?
Can I ask, uh, what is the plan? You kind of fill me in and catch me up on what you guys are gonna do? Yes.
The pre-construction meeting is following, that's right.
Oh, okay, alright, yes.
So we're gonna, I guess we'll hope like it works. I need a motion to approve this with this agreement with Wink. For two, two thousand nineteen annual fill progression survey?
That's not the same deal.
No. Just construction quality check. I need a motion for that.
I will make a motion that we hire them for quality assurance.
You got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second that.
Got a second, any more discussion on that? Hear none, all favor say aye.
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 All say nay, motion passed.
The next line item is the waste fill progression survey that is required annually for our permit, maybe. The cost is fifty-one hundred. After talking with Randy, he said it was around one hundred dollars different than last year.
Okay, I'll need a motion to approve this two thousand nineteen annual fill progression survey. You have a motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second, any more discussion? Hear none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay, motion passed. Any else? Thank you. Page number twenty-three, discussion regarding Lake Hiddenwood.
A minute, a minute.
Yes, please.
Okay, so a little update on Hiddenwood. I think the, we've been looking at it a lot as recreational purposes up until recent events. Nationally, it's been going on since snow melt in the spring and all this rain that we've been having. Um, it's starting to become an economic issue because Hiddenwood flows upward, flows up into Campbell County. There is thousands and thousands of acres of land underwater, in ag land, cattle pasture. And it's starting to really become an issue up there. So it obviously starts at the dam. So, um, talking with the Campbell County EM, Lane Herman, um, at their last commission meeting, they opted to, uh, sign what is called the advanced assistance, um, grant. And what this is, um, is essentially to explain it, it, this funding, if we're approved for it, um, goes towards engineering, hydrological studies, uh, things of that nature. Um, they're using Clark Engineering out of Aberdeen to come in and to do this study. We had to get in contact with Clark to, to see exactly what the cost is going to be, um, the grant is seventy-five, twenty-five. So what Lane had said is it looked like the whole project to do the whole hydrological study from Walworth up to Campbell was about eighty thousand dollars. They approved to take care of their half from where they're having water issues down to the county line. So obviously from the county line down to the problem would be Walworth's responsibility. With those numbers, I don't know if it's gonna be forty thousand on our end because we have the dam part of it. But Clark would be able to come out, probably look at that, give us an estimate and to see what we really are in store for. This funding for this advanced assistance, um, does come from FEMA, but it's administered through the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management. Any city, county governments are eligible to apply for this. If it's approved a natural hazard, um, in the mitigation plan, which is our PDM plan. That is currently in FEMA, uh, right now to be approved. It should be approved in the next two to three weeks to actually be eligible for, for this. So Jennifer received someone from DCOG said, let's go ahead, let's get this grant going. She will do all the paperwork. The deadline is December thirteenth for this. So she said, as soon as you guys get it, you know, approved and talked about, let me know so I can get this application done. So even if we get approved for this, um, the plan hasn't been formally adopted yet. Um, the next stage would be, um, that the project will not be announced until after the plan is finalized. The money for the advanced assistance, um, will become available after the, uh, declared disaster in the state. Is what the next step is, is to get the resolution. The engineer is gonna work, is working with Campbell to get the resolution to actually get it approved and signed by you guys to go and say, yep, this is, we have something going on here and we need this advanced assistance. So, um, trying to see if there's anything. She did recommend to use Clark Engineering just because they are obviously starting to work up in Campbell with it. The study's gonna determine solutions, um, actual projects to control the water issues. And see what's cost effective, whether it's to put in bigger pulvers to start moving the water somewhere else, um, kind of thing. I think we're kind of hoping on our end that it kind of leads back to. The, the dam was there, was put there for a reason and we're obviously now seeing because of that amount of water that is happening. At first, we, I don't think we really saw it. We kind of knew that it broke. You know, sad that we didn't have the recreation. And now all of a sudden we're like, oh wow, look at how this water's flowing and it's really becoming a problem. Glad that we spoke with a, a farmer and, you know, it's not just people not being able to go out and harvest crops and stuff. He leases a pasture from a gentleman who's retired, for example. He paid him the first half, well, it's been underwater. So he goes, I run sixty, had a cattle on there. And he goes, this guy is, you know, depending on me to pay my second half. Well, I haven't had cattle on there, so I don't feel like I should, but then at the same time I would feel bad because he's depending on this money. And he said it's going on everywhere up in Campbell. So, um, that's kind of just a little insight of what we found out at our last meeting and what's going on. I don't know if there's any more you want me to?
Well, I think you kind of hit it. I guess, I don't think everybody's looking at this whole thing as how bad this really is.
Mm-hmm.
And I think, I think everybody needs to start looking at how serious this really is on the amount of land that it's affecting.
Right.
So are they planning on rebuilding the dam and dredging it all out again or what, what's the initial prognosis?
That's the problem.
That's, that's the frustrating part is that we've asked specifically, um, exactly what the plan is and we just aren't getting answers. I think there's a general feeling, uh, right now that probably not. And that's why I'm hoping to now really seeing and understanding what's going on with this, with this break. That we start, you know, somebody had told me that it's not, it's no longer just our problem. It's the state's problem because people of this state are now really becoming affected of this. So we need to kind of, I think, start reaching out to our representatives and start, you know, and, and you guys as a commission, you know, to say, hey, this is what's going on because I think it hasn't been put into the forefront of, of really making it a, a, you know, as a big of an issue as it really is. And so I think we're in that stage now where we kind of need to start pushing and bringing it up and, and, you know, getting a hold of the state and really saying, you know, there's a major issue going on here.
If none of you have been out to Hiddenwood in the last, say, months, then, then you don't understand how much water is running through Hiddenwood right now. It's.
And it hasn't stopped.
I rebuilt them bridges here just cooed two weeks ago and that's, that's unreal how much water is running through there. It ain't, it's not a little stream, it's, it's a lot of water.
And actually from, um, National Weather Service as of this morning, um, they kind of put out their predictions a little bit. And we're in for about a fifty to sixty percent more precipitation than normal in our area for this winter coming up and into spring. So it hasn't stopped. We keep seeing it, we're gonna keep seeing it. And I know that nothing's, you know, gonna be built and happen overnight, but, um, there's not a drought in our future. There's just more water that's gonna be coming. And so, and he said even since the first snow melt, that the amount of water that, it just, it just keeps spreading. And they keep monitoring it and just acres of land just keep going under. And there's no place for it to go, so there's no, and the groundwater is saturated, so it's not absorbing it and going away, it's just sitting there. And now we're gonna add more to it, um, coming into this winter and spring. So I think it's gonna get way worse before it gets better. And especially if anything happens in Hiddenwood.
If it's gonna cost us much, how come the, it didn't go out for bid for the engineer?
This, this advanced assistant just came about, um, just two weeks ago and I talked to Wayne. I think he just discovered it too because we've been asking our, our, our people, you know, what can we do next? What can we do next? And we kind of just kind of keep getting pushed, it seems like, to the side a little bit. And so there just hasn't been an opportunity until now to say, hey, this is what we wanna do, let's put out bids. It's just kind of been like, okay, we've got the opportunity, we know that Clark knows the area. And I think that's just, it was an initial, let's just go with them, kind of a thing. I, you know, I, I can't answer why they go out for bid. I just think we've seen that there was an avenue to take, so let's just take it and go with, you know, the engineers.
I'm just thinking, we've had Clark on some other projects that, uh, seemed like Clark is, has issues sometimes of.
And by all means, we don't have to go with Clark. It was just recommended because that's what Campbell had picked, that we go with Clark since they're gonna be knowing the, the top half of the lake. So that it just kind of can, we can just, you know, conjunction with that so that we know what the whole picture's gonna be. But if we don't wanna go with Clark, we don't have to, we're not tied into them. So if you wanna put it out for a bid and go with a different contractor, both are, they're just gonna have to, the two contractors are probably eventually gonna have to talk to each other though.
See, cause what it's keep, what it's keeping to do right now is that's why when we redid them bridges, that one bridge right there especially, is because it is just, that ditch is getting deeper and deeper up at, at the road where the bridge was. So that's why there was just, there's nothing holding it back anymore. That's why that contractor said had so much trouble that he couldn't, if he had three eight-inch pumps there, he absolutely couldn't keep up with the water there. It's no wonder, if you go up on top of there and look, you'll understand why the water is, is coming through there. I, I believe it's a very serious issue to always tell people. Cause I'm, I gotta go around to some of the farmers. I know I talked with one yesterday and he's just his, he's over five hundred acres and he said he'll never farm again and that's all, all, uh, ag land, so. Like I said, there's a lot of acres that are, this is affecting. But I guess we need to really know is what, what does the commission really feel like they're doing here? I think Campbell County finally figured it, cause they've gotten enough phone calls, they figured that they, they gotta do something.
And I think that's kind of what we've been waiting for, is we needed them to recognize what was going on because we're not actually seeing damages right now from it. I mean, cause of the water is just flowing through. And so by them recognizing the issue that they're going on and that the start of it comes from Walworth County, now it's becoming our issue. It always has been, but now it's becoming even a bigger issue than anticipated.
See, it's, it's a bad thing with, with Campbell. See, it's, it's a bad thing with, with Campbell. What I've been, you guys have been there when we had complaints from the farmers about Salt Lake. Well, see, that's, that's part of the problem again, is that doesn't hit Hiddenwood, but it comes right on by. But that's affecting too, just adding to it, everything that's coming out of Hiddenwood, and then add Salt Lake to it. So, I guess that's what I'm asking, is what's the commission feel like, how we want to go here?
Is game fishing parks involved in them?
Very much. Actually, I've been at numerous meetings with them, and actually, there's going to be another one coming up. I, I know the plan is, the plan changed drastically.
So, this advanced assistance, assistance grant, you say, what percentage would that be our expense?
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five, seventy-five?
And I can ask Jennifer too, because I know that, that a lot of these grants too, you can do it and get that twenty-five percent by doing in-kind too, and, you know, and making meetings and things like that, and get part of it paid if we want to do it that way too, instead of just doing a flat-out, you know, we'll just pay it, so.
Yes, do you want to also explain, like, we need to appoint an agent, which I would think is going, should be our EM, since she's kind of knows what's going on, and that we're going to pass a resolution, and what are the other requirements we need to have?
Yep, so on our initial email, when I asked her what was going on up in Campbell, and, and the, and the steps that we're going to need to take, she said, "You first apply for this advanced assistance to do the hydrological study of the affected area and the loss of the new wood dam. You'll need a resolution and a designation of applicant agent approved by the commission. You'll also need an engineer's estimate and a statement of work. Campbell County is using Clark Engineering out of Aberdeen. If the areas overlap or are affected by the same water flow, it is prudent for the Walworth County to consider using Clark Engineering, or at least coordinating with them in regards to any work you plan to do. The study will help determine alternative solutions and actual projects to the water issues. The project applications are separate, and you wouldn't be able to submit a project application until the study's actually done, and just let it know and keep in contact." So, at the moment, nothing's really getting done there, and so I feel like this advanced assistance is kind of the first push to start getting our area recognized and saying, "Okay, we need to pay attention to this. We have proof of what's going on, that there's an increase in water, that there is a problem. There needs to be some type of mitigation here." And so, that's why I kind of feel that, that this advanced assistance would be kind of the tipping point for that, if, you know, the commission wants, you know, the county wants to get involved in that.
And we're approaching the deadline?
Yeah.
By December thirteenth, so.
What's the legality of this, if the game fishing parks owned it, what is our, what can the county do?
I guess, what I think, what's happened, because what's been, what was that, May, I think it was, seventeenth or something? I think, in my mind, I think they think it's going to just go away. That's, that's how I think they're looking at it right now. Their, their intentions right, I know what their intentions are right now. And that is to, to put a cover in there, bring that road across, and no dam. Nothing to hold all that water back. All the water that comes from, I don't even know exactly where it all comes from. There's a guy doing a little study on it right now, that'll probably figure out exactly where that water's all coming from.
But if it's, if the state owns it, what, like, do we have to go in and, and do anything?
I didn't say we're going in to do anything, I said, "We need to keep, push forward on making them do something." I don't think as, as us sitting here that we can just sit there and say, "Well," I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
Would it help if the governor's office is involved in it, or?
Yeah. It's not really easy getting a hold of them offices.
No, I know it is. I'm just wondering, what lake do we have if we don't own it?
Well, it's just like what Campbell County's doing, I mean, I, I think they're, they're seeing the problem that, that, that this is all affecting, and, and actually, the, it's really, we're the problem, you know. Our lake is the one that's doing it, that's doing not all of the damage to Campbell, but this is really adding to it.
It's game fishing parks that, it's basically their responsibility, isn't it?
Yeah. And I guess, Jamie, how do you, I guess I look at it that it's...
It's kind of like you and I talked before, is with this grant application, there isn't really going to be any, you know, other than the application itself. We're not going to spend any money until it gets approved anyhow, correct?
Right, yeah, until we decide.
So, all we have to do is the resolution, appoint an agent, which probably should be Amanda, get the engineer's estimate, and then there was something else from the engineers. And we can get that approved, that's just the first step. Kind of from what I've been, and believe me, I'm not an expert on this, is that part of this process is showing that there is a problem, and that there is facts to say, "These are the problems that we have." We have the experts, the engineers with the hydrological study saying, "This is the impact of this dam being washed out, and this is what we are going to foresee. This is what the loss of acreage or whatever they're, they're looking for in order to grease the wheels farther up, whether it's the federal government or the state government." Because right now, they don't have any information, I would assume, or are not allowing any information to say.
Or not make the information.
Pardon?
They're all looking for the information.
Correct. They didn't want to know it, I would assume. It's like, well, how much, we don't know about any damage, what is your documentation that there's seven thousand acres underwater in Campbell and Walworth County?
Isn't some of that also the FEMA report?
No, this is not a, this is not...
This was on the first deal.
This was all the way back in eighteen, and that's the one that got denied twice. And so, this is no longer on the FEMA radar. This is whatever, it's on, it's not really on anybody's radar, I don't think anymore, it feels like. And we need to bring it back and say, "Okay, we're not going to forget about it, we're not going to go away, there's an issue. We need to continue to keep working." And this advanced assistance to get that information and to prove what's going on, I think is going to be the push that needs to get it back into everybody's view of, like, okay, we need to pay attention to this, and we need to do something about it. Because if we just keep continuing not to make decisions, or not to do the advanced assistance, or trying to get involved and try to do something about it, nothing's ever going to happen.
Yes.
Because of all the flooding declaration and stuff this year in FEMA, is it possible that we could attach this to FEMA?
We had our FEMA rep here on Tuesday, and I asked him, and he said, "It had to have happened in the scope of the disaster that we declared." So, that meant that this happened a year before, so you cannot tie it into the active disasters that are going on now, because the actual break happened in eighteen. Even though that there's flooding happening from the snowmelt and the extra rain and everything, the disaster is already done. This is just the continuance of the disaster. And he said, "It's, it is not a federal FEMA issue, it is a state issue." And you need to keep bringing it up to your representatives in your state government, because you're, you're not going to get, you're not going to get anything from when the disaster actually happened, because the timeframe has ended, and you can't attach it to an active disaster, if it didn't happen at that time.
See, if you, if you recall when that disaster happened, and we were, we put in X amount of dollars, and then they had said that we were going to probably be able to use Hiddenwood? Do you recall when they, all of a sudden, "No, we can't use that," and they had that, at three point five million dollars, and all of a sudden it was, "No, you can't use that." Well, I guarantee you, the very first meeting, and they called X number of people that they, that they called to come to this meeting with the state. And all that has changed considerably from that very first meeting. Very first meeting, they were going to dig that all back out, the whole, the whole lake got changed.
I don't have a problem with getting the grant, I just...
I just feel we should start with that resolution and go from there.
Yes, Jamie, do you want to have it on the agenda then for the next meeting? The resolution to appoint the agent, and to have Amanda for this, or someone before this, get a hold of Clark, and find out what the, was it the engineer's estimate, and somebody else, Amanda, that is going to need to be in the application?
State board.
And get that started at least ahead of time, so when the next meeting, or whenever we decide we're going to have this resolution voted on, everything else is already in place, because it's, we run up against those deadlines so fast.
Okay, going to the next meeting, that's almost going to, we are going to be so close to being out of time that it's...
And you and I had discussed maybe just doing a special meeting to approve this as soon as we've got everything done, which, that's yours, is the commission's decision, but we should definitely be unified on this, if that's what you're going to do in order to help things expedite, because in all these processes, there's always time limits. And when we don't agree, that's when we lose our time, and then lose the ability to apply for this.
How long would it take you to get the resolution drawn up?
Couple of days, next.
You're basically going to do a camp...
Yeah, we're going to basically take what Campbell County did and modify it to fit Walworth's needs. And then we already know that Amanda will probably be appointed. Does the engineer's, and the engineer's estimate and the engineer's list of work, that has to be with the thirteenth of December application?
Yeah, it all has to be in, it actually has to be submitted with the resolution, and then, you know, the agent at the same time.
So, we can have, probably have to get a hold of them and find out when they can get that done. So, we can get it, know that it's for sure before the thirteenth of December.
Has Campbell already applied for theirs?
They approved it at their last meeting two weeks ago, so they gave Jennifer and NECOG the go-ahead to start getting the application ready. They're getting there, yep, so they're, they're a bull's roll.
I personally feel we should have a special meeting next week.
Oh, just looking, pray Wednesday?
Jamie thinks he can?
Yeah, that's the problem. Yeah.
Nine o'clock?
Yes. So, then you'd have the two issues, wanting to approve the resolution, and then also to appoint the designated agent for this application. And then the other two things we could run with right now, because we won't get that probably in by then anyhow, but once the, the engineer's information comes in, I don't think it has to be approved by the county commission anyhow, it just needs to be submitted with the grant application.
So, is that what you want me to go with, this part?
What's that?
So, I think we've got an issue with timing as far as...
I'd rather see the twenty-four. Well, the thing is, is to try to get it done as soon as we can, I mean, that's one thing, right? That's fine. I don't think it's been in the world if we were to...
As long as you can get a quorum, we're okay.
Yes?
Jim, does the twenty-fourth work for you for a special meeting instead of the twenty-third?
What day is that on?
Thursday.
I need three people.
I don't, I don't have any idea. I would think it would.
Like I said, what's all we need is three.
And someone can appear telephonically also, to have the quorum, so.
That's all we're going to be doing, is discussing that, voting on it, that's it. We just pick a day, and three guys can be there, and tell them on the phone, and then we just go with it. That's fine, twenty-fourth is fine.
And vote with Clark, you want me to go with Clark?
I guess personally, I mean, I know we've got issues with Clark, I, I think we're in a bad spot right now, and I think we should follow Campbell County on that. What's the rest of you think? I'm only one person.
Well, I, I feel too, that being there doing the upper part of it, it's kind of stupid to have another engineering group coming in on the lower part of it, but...
I don't, I don't like Clark's practices, but I wish there was time that we could talk to Campbell and put it off for bid or something to...
Or we run up to a significant time, yeah, crunch, if we do that, it's, because you have to publish.
We don't have a lot of time.
No, we don't.
Anything else, Amanda?
That's all I have.
All right, thanks. All business.
Just kind of as an update, we have gone to all six counties with the jail presentation, and they're supposed to let us know after their first November meeting of whether they're going, would like to be a part of it or not. So, I would say, pray by the first December meeting, we can make a decision on what we're going to do. We got to make a decision here pretty quick.
Anything, Josh? Anything to add to that?
I had one, one of them called me back and just, one of the questions I asked was the, the scope of the work, are we going to be able to take, you know, stay within that, that six million, as far as what we're thinking, as far as the building cost? I, the only answer I can give them is there's no engineering firm that we're, actually we're working with right now to try and get that. So, I don't know if that's going to cause a couple of them to be hesitant, or, I don't know. So, just FYI out there to you guys, and to Gavin and Marion that went to the meetings with us and stuff like that.
One of the concerns that they, one of the suggestions is if they are a part of this, they would like to see a board form that has a member of all the counties, just so they feel like they're a part of it. I said, I don't perceive that being a problem.
More or less, it's a, it's a regional concept, and they, they just want to have a say at the table.
Any other, all business, new business. Are there none that take it more future? A note's on the floor, you need a second? You need a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.